All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome. Like to call this regular meeting of the Bethel Board of Selectment Order for Tuesday, August 2nd, 2022. Please rise. Join me in pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. First order of business is consideration of the special meeting minutes of July 21st. What's that? Yeah, it's farther down. Entertained a motion to accept those. Okay, yeah, you were. So, all right, I'll make that motion. Rich, second. Yes, this was just, we accepted minutes and we changed the day of public hearing. So not, no whole lot going on. So those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And one abstention. Item number three correspondence that call your attention to a nice letter we got from Mr. Harsh on Colonial Drive, who was quite happy with the with the performance of our new tree ward. Larry Ritter, who started with us just a few weeks ago, just so, just for the record, tree warden is, is a stipend position, part-time, sort of an on-call thing. We went for almost, well, actually, we went for over a year since our former tree ward retired and moved out of state. Tree wards are kind of hard to find. So we're very happy that Larry has joined us and thank Mr. Harsh for his for his correspondence. Was there anything else, anything else that came in late, Dion? All right. Item number four, public comment.
Yes. Cindy McCorvey, down 19 Alton Avenue. Just want to keep this alive, that I really believe that the ARPA funds, though we have no jurisdiction over that as citizens or the board of finance, that they be considered for use to, to bridge the gap with what the school is missing for its H-back. They're short because the state has put down, sent down unfunded, man, unexpectedly. And one of the, one of the items on the ARPA list, which I know the first level will tell me has not been approved, I know it hasn't been approved, is the splash pad park and parking area for Arloa. But a fair amount of money has already been spent on that. I really think that you might consider, you should consider using the ARPA funds for things that will mitigate fallout from COVID, that you can make a better case for funding the firing range and the $700,000, $700,000 gap with those monies before you, you know, build the park. That's just a good idea.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Hearing none. Thank you. First electments report, just a couple of things to cover tonight. One thing is something I feel I have to set the record straight on because it was on, it was on the video at our last regular meeting, that's a special meeting, but gentleman came and basically accused the town of not operating our building maintenance program effectively. And his comment that he made was that he had gone through town hall when he came in and pushed the button, pushed the test button on six or seven of the exit signs. And they didn't light up. And I wanted to point out, I didn't think of this at the time, but the fire regulations do not require batteries in those because we have a generator in this building that comes on automatically and powers the signs. And I just want that on the record, that there's no deficiency in that. Although, always thank people for their comments. I do the referendum, want to thank all the folks in town. The turnout was quite low, but the referendum on the police station firing range at completion, and we're finally seeing the end of the tunnel, life, the end of the tunnel, and it's not a train. So I want to thank our citizens for coming out to support that. Oh, again, the turnout was low, but the, but the, the voice was strong that we are going to move forward this, and I think we're in very good shape going ahead. And last but not least, and I know I'm going to be probably kicked in the shins for embarrassing her for this, but I do want to point out that this is Dion's final meeting as recording secretary for the Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance. She is moving with her family to Arkansas. And we will miss her greatly. She's done a great job. She has a wonderful style with some of the folks who come in and call on the phone and have, have some pretty tough problems to deal with. And, and of course, Dion was the architect of the Food Truck Friday program. So Dion, thank you for everything you've done for us. It's not too late to change your mind. Before I move on, Rich and Brian, do you have any, any other comments? All right. Under old business, item number six, we have consideration of the Northeast Mountain Bike Association proposal, but did we get anything from them?
I've got some paperwork, but she is not, was not able to attend.
Okay.
And so we're going to just.
Okay.
Go to the next meeting.
I'm gonna, all right, I, I, I thought that what we'd asked for was some boilerplate language to begin working up an agreement for this board to consider. Yes.
The one thought that's come to my mind, and you know, some people have approached me, and not only hunters and whatnot. There's just a little bit of concern with the theme open space. And, you know, I think it wouldn't hurt if possibly, as we get closer to making a decision that we hold either a special meeting and just invite residents to come in and tell us what they think the best use is for that open space. And, you know, if the majority of them say, yeah, we think, then fine, but I mean, it is open space. And, you know, I think a little bit remiss without inviting the residents to speak to us and, you know, maybe hold a meeting and let them talk.
Actually, I think we're required to hold a public hearing anyway. So, yeah, we'll do that.
Yeah, that'd be great.
All right. Well, I'm gonna, I'll make a motion that we table the number proposal for now. So, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That, that carries. Item number seven, which is item B in your packet, consideration of the 2022 controlled deer hunt for January 2023, the Terre Haute Chestnut Ridge. We had tabled this because there was some confusion as to whether it was going to be bow hunting only or bow and firearm, but I think the, yes. Thank you for joining us, Frank. If you can just clarify.
Sure. I sent the letter into you that's for the 2022 deer season, and it includes the 2023 January only, where the confusion is January is bow only.
Okay.
The state of Connecticut only allows for bow, but we always included it when we got a term premise for the 2022 season, you included the January season, which I think the verbage that was used in the letter confused people.
Okay.
But we always had shotgun muzzleloader, which is about two weeks for both seasons. You know, two weeks for one season and two and a half weeks for the other season. We've always had that. I've been doing it for, was on their way before I took control of it.
Okay. I make the motion. Okay. All right.
Most on the floor, floor is open? I have concerns, especially for normal people that go up there, ride bikes through the property with the shotgun and muzzleloaders. And earlier I had, it's Frank, I, I wasn't really ever aware that we were doing the shotgun and muzzleloaders up there. I know we were doing the shotgun years ago with the fishing game, and they used to put the pheasants up to the reservoir and that. I'm not comfortable with the shotgun and muzzleloaders.
If I may.
Yes.
Answer that. I, I, I agree with your concern, and I understand your concern. My feeling is, is the time of year that we're going to be there is not conducive really to vibrating. We're going from November 16th through December 31st. You know, it's not the most prime, yes, there, will there be diehard bikers that are going to go? Yes, I'm not going to say it was not, but their prime time is break, fall, summer, early. We're more in the colder weathers, has a tendency to snowing.
Yeah, November, yeah.
Yeah. And then, and if you look at it, archery is open from September, but archery, I don't think is so much of a concern because that's very close. The muzzleloader and shotgun are only two and a half long week seasons. So there's really only two Saturdays. Most of the people who hunt work, that's really, so you're talking basically four, maybe five Saturdays where there could actually be people and bikers there at the same time.
Let me ask a question. In, in, in the prior years, well, as long as I've been here, when I, when I get the permit forms to sign, you know, Lisa Bird, the town clerk brings them over, it, everything is blocked out except bow. So, you know, they, they say archery, but have shotguns and muzzleloaders always been permitted up there?
Yes, sir. What you're, you got, you signed two different, let's, you signed one slip for January, that that's bow only.
Okay.
And then the other slip that you signed was for the 2022 season.
Okay.
The current season, I should say. And that had muzzleloader and shotgun on.
Now, do you, I, I don't think the town does this, but do, does your organization post notices during hunting season that hunting will be, that hunting is active?
The Bethel Fishing Game does post that. Chestnut, I don't know if they post it at Terre Haute. I believe they do with the two entrances, which one entrance I think is up by interstate lumber and one interstate down the other, that there are hunters and there's invasion, blaze orange.
The, the thing I also wanted to note is that we don't actually formally allow mountain bike, that, like, there are, there are some trails that some people have built in there without permission, but it's, I, I mean, you know, notwithstanding the, the number proposal, which, you know, we haven't acted on yet, but if there are mountain bikers up there right now, they shouldn't, they really shouldn't be because we don't, we've, we've not built that into our insurances, you know, as, as a formal activity that we're, that's permitted up there.
So I, I've ordered the Chestnut property, and they've been hunting with shotgun and muzzleloader up there for years. In 20 years I've lived in Bethel, I only had one issue, which I believe he took care of for me, you know, the hunter kind of got lost and was walking on my property, and they handled it very professionally. The hunter apologized, and it was a non-issue. I understand that, you know, we're thinking about it like trail, but from the beginning, I said that these are Bethel residents who've been enjoying this open space from since I've been here, because honestly, probably 15 years ago, I had permission on Chestnut. I would get the permission. It goes back even longer than that. It goes back to Judy Noah check, signed my permission. And we've always allowed shotgun muzzleloader and the archery. And being a neighbor to it, I found the hunters have been nothing but light, they wear their blaze orange, you know, they're in there.
Yep.
And, you know, I think it would be a shame if we took this, you know, basically privileged, everything given our town residents for the past, you know, 30 years, just to say now, well, we don't like it because we're thinking about putting it in a light trail. I don't think that's fair to them.
The, the, the bike, this proposal is definitely.
No, what, so what I'm saying is, I order it. So I, I've seen it for 20 years, and they've always been nothing but respectful, follow the rules. They don't park on the road, they park on web road where they're told to. And I've never had an issue with any of them in all my time here at Bethel. So I, I fully support your guys continuing your property.
Well, I, I can, I can support the motion. I, I was, I'll have to confess, I was unaware that there I just not, was not aware of the, you know, the two different seasons and that the, the first part of it, the 22 season, but have it as it has in the past, so.
I mean, the archery, yeah.
I could get signs donated, we're more than happy to put signs at the beginning of Terre Haute, you know, a nice laminated, no, I'll get a professional sign company donate that, that states that from these dates.
Yes.
Was archery season is from these dates, muzzleloader seasons from these dates, and shotgun seasons, I could put it at both entrance to Terre Haute, and I could put it at the main entrance at Chestnut, if that would help.
Okay.
Help, you know, at least we're making people aware of it.
Okay. Yeah, because people actually do hike up on that property. I mean, it's.
It's rugged, but yeah.
Yes, it is rugged.
Yes, I, I watch the mountain bike trail. It's, it's rugged. Right, would you, would you consider modifying your motion to just say include stipulations, just replace the.
Matt, back.
Yeah.
Matt, can you hear?
Yeah.
All right, I'm not, I'm just on my telephone, yeah. A couple of things. First thing is, I, I've been dealing with the town as long as you have and Rich, and I got to tell you, I, I never thought that we were doing shotguns or muzzleloaders, and that's the truth. I never realized that. And maybe that's my ignorance and not having looked at it a lot closer of what the paperwork that was that came through. But I'm not sure our insurance carrier has ever signed off on muzzleloaders or shotguns. I know they have for both because I gave it to them, and they said that they would agree to the waivers. So I, I, I don't know. I think that if you're going to pass something, fine, but I would just make it, make sure that, two things, number one, that the waivers come by my office again, so I can review them and send them on to the insurance carrier, and the insurance carrier has no problems with the muzzleloaders or the shotguns.
Okay, thank you.
Just to, to assure you, I'm here today that we do the signup, vet the people, make sure that they are Bethel residents, they have to show us an ID license.
Yeah.
They sign the form that was created by the town attorney that identifies the town from any liability. But also, just so you know, that the state of Connecticut, that permission slip that you sign, that also condemns, it alleviates the town from any responsibility.
Okay.
We actually do a double. We do that sheet, plus we do what the town lawyer asks us, and he gets notarized. No gentleman leaves here with their permission slips without that notarized slip.
Okay.
If for some reason, I can't, normally I get a notarized, notarized be here to do it for me, and for some reason they can't, they don't get their permission slip. They fill all their paperwork out, and I give it back to the town, to Eileen, the town clerk's office. She doesn't hand them until they bring, she, they bring her the notarized slip, or she happens to notarize it for them.
Okay.
To assure that that doesn't happen, that there's no way somebody could be out there without those permission slips signed.
Okay.
So I like to amend my motion.
Okay.
So I make the motion that we approve the controlled hunt as in the letter submitted by Mr. Germanero, with the conditions that they adequately post all the properties at their expense with warning signs, and that they provide the town's attorney with the waivers in all the forms of the inside for this.
And, and one other thing, a third condition that our, the town's insurance consultant can verify that, that the insurance will cover that as, as a, as a permitted activity.
Well, I think what we're looking to do is relieve the insurance obligation by doing the waiver. You know, other towns do these controlled hunts too, and they just acquire the waiver, so the insurance company is not on the hook.
Okay, so your motion then is to refer to the town attorney.
Refer to the waivers to the town attorney for his review, to make sure that they're.
All right, I, I live with it. I'm not, I think the consultant should be advised of, and anybody can still sue you. Okay, well, Marty will, all right.
Yeah.
That's my motion.
Okay.
We, we can vote on it or we can't.
Well, I'll, I'll make a, I'll put a motion on the floor to add one amendment that we also have a review by the town insurance consultant.
Okay.
Okay. Any discussion?
I'm sorry, I have one question.
Yeah.
If they sign these slips and we get them notarized, are we not giving them their permission slips? Because we normally do that like a week before the season starts. So if they're going to then go to the insurance to be revised, and they have, for some reason, say, no, we're still going to have guys who love the permission slips.
We'll know that.
No, we'll, we'll know that ahead of time.
You'll know that ahead. Okay.
We just want to verify the town isn't responsible.
Okay, that's why I just wanted to clarify that. Sorry to interrupt.
No, no, that's okay. No, I'm glad you brought that up. No, we'll know, we'll know the answer to that in the next 24, 48 hours.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, it's, it's, I'm, I'm.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Sorry. I was just going to say, as soon as I receive the waiver, I will pass it on to our insurance people. So, and they're usually pretty good. They usually get back to us within a day or two. So it'll be plenty of time. That's not going to be a problem. And it's like the waiver in the past that I've seen, it's probably not going to be an issue with me as long as we don't have a problem with the muzzleloaders and the shotguns with the insurance carrier. And one of the things you have to remember, even if they sign a waiver, all right, where they're going to hold the town harmless, all right, we're still going to get sued. If somebody goes up that property and shoots somebody by accident, we're, the town is still, I guarantee you, we're going to get sued. So we're still going to be dealing with it. Ultimately, we may be able to pass on any damages to the person who's responsible, but we will be sued. Just, I just want to make that clear. Have to be true with the ball.
Let, let me ask you a quick question. Have you guys looked into getting your own insurance for the controlled hunt about, you know, liability policy?
Problem is, is not, we don't have members, it's just town residents. So I don't have, you know, I don't.
I think one day you might have these.
Yeah, one year, one year you might have 15 guys that come.
My, like, my business liability insurance, I name who's insured under my policy. So if I'm, you know, if I'm doing it, I also say that you're named in my insurance policy. And anyone who hunts outside of that then is uncovered and shouldn't be. I mean, you, you obviously have a list of people, because I know we only do it on one day generally, so we know who it's going to be. Have you looked into the possibility of getting a private policy with those people's names insured?
To be honest with you, sir, no. I've never looked at it, because we've never, we never had to, so I've never, I kind of inherited this a couple of years ago from somebody else, so I can't tell you for the years past, they may have looked into it.
They.
And, and I understand what, what the town attorney's saying, but if a biker goes up there and flips his bike, they can sue us too.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, just because you have a shotgun in your hand versus a pedal bike, the town's still going to get sued either way. At least we have a letter stating that we're releasing the town from liability.
Well.
Bikers might not, or the guys who are biking there to raise their leg, don't.
Well, we, we've already verified that, that people who use town property, even if without permission, do have coverage from our curb policy. What we want to make sure is that there's no exclusions in that policy for firearms. It's, it's, it's a five-minute review.
Yeah, no, that's why.
This, and I'm, I'm going to bet right now with 99% assurance that they're going to say, yeah, it's fine with the waivers, but we're just going to, you know, tie up the loose end.
Oh, sure. No, no, Eileen has a copy of that letter. Do you want me to send that to you guys? Would you have her send that, copy of that letter, the release letter? That we, that the contract.
Yeah, if you could send it to my office, that's nice.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll have Marty and the insurance consultant take a look at it.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll get it from Eileen in the morning. She has, she, she keeps all those. I don't keep any copies, but she keeps the copies.
Okay.
Okay, so, so a motion, well, Brian made a motion.
Yep.
And then he amended his motion. That motion was not voted on, but you went ahead and you added.
I, I made a motion to amend his.
Okay.
So basically, he, if procedurally, he withdrew his first motion and restated it with the stipulation that there's signage, that they provide signage, and that the town attorney review. I put a amended, a motion on the floor to amend it and also require a review by the, the insurance consultant. So we haven't voted on either one yet. What's that?
Nobody second.
I second his motion. Yeah. Matt second.
Okay, I got it.
This is our version of who's up first. Okay, so any other discussion? Okay, so on the amendment to require, just tie up the loose end insurance, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries on the main motion.
Are you not voting? Yes on that?
Oh, I did vote, yes.
So three yeses, okay.
I mean, that basically, I, I just accepted the amendment, so.
Yeah, so on, on the main motion to approve with those conditions, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thanks, Frank. Moving on to item number eight, consideration of public site building commission recommend, recommendation to retain Downs Construction Company as construction manager for the firing range. This is packets C and D.
You can leave if you want to stay for a while. I don't feel like you got to stay.
Everyone else leaves when their part's over, so don't feel like you got to stay. Feelings if you leave.
Okay, so let's turn the floor over to Nancy and Jerrilyn, if you, and Lieutenant Durkin, if you have any comments. So basically, this, the, I've got the minutes and the estimate or the bid from Downs Construction is below $50,000, so it does not need to go through the formal bid process, but I know you looked at other alternatives on top of that, but you want to just give us a top line in your, your selection process?
Sure. So we were asked, Public Site and Building Commission was asked to come here tonight to talk about our accepting of the Downs proposal to be our construction manager on the training. Once the referendum passed, we were ready to swing into action to get things moving along with both action target, hiring a construction manager, and getting the construction drawings completed by J. Constance Hume's. Initially, when we weren't unsure of when the referendum would be, I thought we might have to be here just to get that approval. Now that the funding is approved, I think we can just go ahead and go forward. However, you did ask us to be here, so we're here. Had discussions with Downs put together a budget for us for the referendum, Trevano in charge of, which is great. Construction, or in conversation with them throughout the process when we were first assigned by the board of selectmen to complete the training.
No, only the rationale that Downs was the original contractor of the building. They'll have the most cost-effective approach going forward. They have worked with J. Constance Hume's on other public safety buildings, so there's a, there's a team integration there that will benefit the project. And they have, Downs is committed to fully bidding all of the subcontractor work that's required for the project. As is typical of the construction manager, they will solicit three bids for every trade pack. They will put together the trade packages based on the J. Constance Hume's documents. It will solicit subcontractor interest in those bid packages. They will be fully transparent, presenting all of the bids that they received to the Public Site and Building Commission. Consult with the Public Site and Building Commission on which subcontractors can finally award, whether it be a low bidder or some other, you know, or whether it's qualified, some low bidders, and their development of the guaranteed maximum price for talent. Public Site Building Commission will have, you know, full involvement and full control over that process.
Okay. All right, so before we open the floor for discussion, I'll put a motion on the floor that we accept the Public Site Building Committee's recommendation to retain Downs Construction Company as the construction manager of record for the outfitting of the police firing range in a, an amount not to exceed $44,819. Second, for second discussion. All right, yes, Marty, were you, were you trying to?
Well, I had a question, a, a simple question, but obviously, I'm not on the board, so you people go first.
Okay, so I was involved on the board of finance with the construction. We had a very contentious meeting with Downs Construction. And it was my understanding that the building and site committee wasn't happy and felt that there were errors made. And, you know, there were a lot of accusations on the table. So I guess my main question is, and to be honest, Lieutenant Durkin, I'd like you to chime in because you were part of it, you were there when it was being built, and, you know, you're living in the PD now, and I'm going to, and this isn't to insult anyone in this room, I'm going to respect his opinion because he lives there, he works there, and he's seen it. I understand that they did it. I mean, how much confidence do you have that we're not going to run into the same issues? Because when I'm reading the contract, there are some things, not that this is a contract, but the proposal, I mean, we're saying that all the work's going to be done in three months. If it's not done in three months, we're going to, you know, incur additional costs. In terms of obtaining the bids, you know, what's the percentage that they're getting on top of bids in terms of, does a 44,000 cover that, or if it comes in for 200,000, do they get an additional percentage of that bid? So first, I mean, out of respect for the chairwoman, I'd like you, just to kind of give you a brief synopsis of, you know, why you picked Downs, your confidence level, and then I really, you know, appreciate some comment from Lieutenant Durkin.
Sure, very much confident. It have initially in the same meeting of the board of finance, but also public hearing that we had to have to approve additional funding. It wasn't Downs, which was a project that was over budget. So we had to go back, come back. So we had to go back, come back over the referendum amount, we had to come back and ask for, I believe it was additional eight hundred eighty thousand change. And I didn't see, I missed the beginning of that meeting. We're talking about public hearing, uh, but for most of the most of the meeting that I attended, there were a lot of questions that were asked of Downs. For me, it sounded like people were asking Downs to accept responsibility for the project being over budget. It wasn't their responsibility that some of the bids came in over what the um the budget. When we ended up having some issues towards the end of the project and needed to have things either fixed or updated, et cetera, both Jukunski Humes and Downs stuck right with us right to the very end. They ran away. Um, we didn't have to pound them to get all that stuff done. It was just, it was done. Some of it needed to take a little time because it required some research and some further information. So, uh, once we got all that together, they ran. As Geraldine said, since they've been involved in the project, we believe that it's the same with Jukunski Humes, since they were involved from the beginning, that they would be the most cost-effective to get someone else to come in and have to start doing measurements, become familiar with the building, with the building systems, et cetera. I believe any other um construction.
And do they get a percentage on top of the bids? Does that?
That's part of the, so that's, so their ma- your management fee is three percent.
So three percent on top.
Um, the nine thousand a bay of proposal is an estimate based on, based on the cost estimate that they, that we have on the table, which they and we believe is conservatively built and higher than it will necessarily have to be because of the escalation factors and contingencies that we incorporated into the original budget. Um, so it does note in their proposal that their final fee is to be determined, but it will be based on three percent of the cost of the work. And our company, we're confident and Downs is also confident that the total fee will 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 still be under the fifty thousand dollars.
So cost of the work doesn't include the purchasing of the target system?
No, so none of their, none of, they're going to, they're committed to manage the integration of the system with the rest of the construction, but none of their fees are based on that eight hundred twenty thousand dollar cost of the action target work. They are just.
So from my perspective, and I spoke to Chief Wagner about this as well, uh, we were pretty happy with Downs Construction. Even during the punch lists era of the construction, they were very responsive. Like Nancy said, they didn't run away. They they came back, and I think the fact that they came back are are interested in finishing this project shows that. You know, I was impressed that they did. I, you know, from the beginning, we had heard about construction companies that will do that, you know, once they get their check, they're out. They didn't, they they didn't keep coming back. Obviously, we had a water issue, which I don't even know where that stands still as far as who's at fault for that, right?
That was.
The architect, was it the?
No, that was the subcontractor. So that was faulty material.
Yeah, that that to me is really the only issue that was outstanding, which is not a small issue, big issue. But as far as the other punch list stuff, they were very responsive and uh, we were happy with Downs Construction. And there, you know, there's times they called us and showed up there and we didn't even know. We weren't expecting to, like, yeah, we're supposed to do this, this, and this, and we came on home, so we're pretty happy.
Thank you, okay. Uh, I just, I, just for the record, I I wanna uh make a couple states. I concur with Lieutenant Durkin on that. I was involved in many, many meetings when that that project ran into some difficulties. So there were two basic problems. The first one was there were unknown conditions that were discovered once excavation began. And that took up a very large piece of the contingency that had been set aside for unknown conditions. Um, and so that was problem number one. That was, and Downs had nothing to do with that. Uh, they had to work through that like everybody else did. Item number two was the fact that a couple of key items, ma- mainly the HVAC systems, HVAC systems came in significantly over the estimated amount. And again, that had nothing to do with Downs per se that was, I mean, I've tried to tell this to so many people. Really lousy luck, the way that that came out. Then the third issue, of course, was the water problem. Downs stuck with that, uh, helped us work it out with the, uh, actually, they worked out the issue with the subcontractor. They repaired everything under warranty. They put a waterproof coating on it. Uh, they paid for the testing uh of that material and it's working fine. It's been tested twice. So I really can't fault Downs. In fact, I've got nothing but good things to say about their uh willingness to stick with the project and and see it through to its uh a positive conclusion. So I'm, you know, I'm, I have no problem supporting this motion at all, so.
So and to add to, um, your number one, that put the unknown conditions. When we found first a concrete that was buried, that kind of pretty much ate up almost all of our contingency, oh, the owner's contingency. We found the other stuff once excavation started for the.
The barn.
Firing range, we found pieces of the barn, et cetera. Our contingency, the owner's contingency was almost gone. So Downs said, we're using our contingency to take care of that stuff instead of requiring us to go back and kind of change our, get some more money. So that was, um, great that they did that. They obviously had enough in their contingency to cover that plus other um things that they chose to do, so. Logic moving along.
Okay, yeah. I mean, I'll uh concur with, you know, about Downs, Downs, uh, sticking with it. They did stick with, they, you know, they even hired a an engineer themselves to come in and look at that water issue. And they stuck with it until it was resolved. Uh, my only question is about the three-month construction version. When are you gonna say construction starts for that three months?
That's a three-month period. That's probably going to be strummed over six months. They will, as soon as the drawings are complete and as soon as the actual target uh work has been integrated into the construction drawings, it's likely to happen. Hopefully by the end of August, September, Downs would like to bid the project right away. And that way they can lock in pricing now for work that really won't be done, most of it until January. So their plan is to bid bid right away and then get into the building early, again, right away, early in the fall, to do some of the prep work. It has to happen before Action Target drops their equipment and does their installation. Then Downs will come back after Action Target, close up the building, um, do the ceiling to cover up where they're where they're putting the ductwork. So they have, they have three months worth of work, but they're gonna do, you know, a month and a half in, early in the fall, a month and a half of February, you know, January, February. And be gone in the middle and not not cost anybody any money on management.
So it's two months, it's just not consecutive.
And they understand that sequence and they're all on board with that. And that's how they built their their man, their their cost personnel into it, that there, there's not a full-time person that's gonna be sitting there for six months.
And nothing going on, right?
Yeah, Geraldine worked with them on that to make sure that their costs didn't include months of, you know, you know, nobody from Downs being on the project because we're waiting for Action Target to finish. Um, because they have, they have approximately a five-month fabrication period where clearly.
And and once, once construction starts, then we'll have a representative there every day.
Exactly.
No, once a week, he said.
Yeah, so not every day. They're gonna be there on a weekly basis. Again, they're trying to balance the need to monitor this, but you know, the two hundred thousand dollars worth of work that is construction versus the eight hundred eighty thousand dollars of the work that is going to be actually target. So they will be on site as needed, but it will not be a full-time superintendent there five days a week, even for those three months of construction. And part of our, our, part of our work, or the the building place work, is to make sure that the contractor's performing as their contracted to do. So part of our work as the owner's rep is to monitor that. And if they need more or presence on site, we make sure that they're there, or if they need less presence on site, it can save us some money. You know, we're we'll pick up some of that slack.
Right, any other questions? We have most of us. Okay, yeah, go ahead, Marty.
Just a a very quick question.
Go ahead.
I I don't really care, you know, whether it's Downs or somebody else, but did the Public Site and Building Committee consider sending out any other proposals or request to anybody?
No.
Was anybody else contacted?
No.
All right, that was it. Thank you.
So on the motion to approve Downs Construction for the amount of forty-four thousand eight hundred nineteen dollars, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. Item. Thank you very much, Geraldine and Nancy. Okay, thanks for being here. Item number nine, consideration of a request from the Public Works Direct Department. Uh, this is through the Comptroller's Office to uh expend eighteen thousand three hundred seventy-five dollars and ninety-seven cents to buy out the lease on a twenty nineteen GMC Terrain, which is the vehicle that is now currently being used by our Public Works Director. So this is a twenty nineteen vehicle. It has only twelve thousand miles on it, many more years of use in it. So, uh, Brad, I see you're on. Obviously, this is a, this is an economical decision, but do you have anything to add to that?
Uh, no, um, I think it made sense to buy this vehicle even at the current car market, what it is, is what it is. But with what's going on out there, it's a no-brainer to buy the vehicle.
All right, so I'll make a motion that we approve uh purchase of, I'm just gonna round it up to eighteen eighteen thousand three hundred seventy-six dollars to purchase a twenty nineteen, buy out the lease on the twenty nineteen GMC Terrain, which is operated by the Public Works Department. Is there a second? Second, okay, oh, from capital on recurring. Yeah, any other discussion? Here are none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the carries. Uh, final item, a consideration of a municipal resolution. Uh, Marty, are you still on with us?
Yes.
Uh, I have a question for you about this. This is just a resolution of, uh, Phyllis Kansky is applying for a steep grant uh that would be used to demolish the old police station. So I just, I wanna read the first line of this and ask you a question. It says, resolve that first selectman Matthew S. Nickerbocker be and hereby is authorized to accept. Should the, my question is, should that not say, uh, resolve the first selectman Matthew S. Nickerbocker or his designee? Should we add that?
Yeah, I would do that. That's.
Okay. All right, well, I'll make the corrections. I'll read this into the record and I'll give the correction to Dion. I'll make a, I'll put this resolution on the floor for your consideration. Resolve that Matthew, at first selectman Matthew S. Nickerbocker or his designee be and hereby is authorized to accept on behalf of the town of Bethel, a twenty twenty-two Connecticut STEAP grant in the amount up to three hundred fifty thousand for the demolition of the old police station. And further resolve that Matthew S. Nickerbocker or his designee is hereby authorized to enter into and execute any and all agreements, contracts, documents that necessary to obtain said twenty twenty-two STEAP grant with the state of Connecticut. Uh, that's the resolution. Is there a second? Second, okay. Uh, and this doesn't mean we're gonna get it. We just have to, under Connecticut's rules now, uh, we have to have a resolution approved by the board selectmen in order to apply for a steep grant. So this is just step one out of out of many. And for the record, if anybody listening, STEAP stands for Small Town Economic Assistance Program.
Yeah, that was, that was my question. Did we get it? That this is just to apply?
This is just to apply. Yep, yeah, correct.
Is that a fifty, that's a full funding by the state, so.
Yes, correct. What's that, what's that?
Do we have to pay it back to the state?
No. Nope, SEAP grants are, they're not loans, they're grants, so. Okay, those in favor signify by saying aye. And I, that motion carries and, you know, one might hear about that. Somewhere between thirty days and thirty months. Who else? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Any others in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The carries and Dion, thank you again.
Thank you.